Hey, everybody. Welcome. We're gonna start this off with a prayer and a pledge. And, uh, we just got the prayer, right? First of all, welcome everybody to Ramona. A lot of folks here from Ramona, a lot of from other places around town. So please, uh, leave some of your dollars and invite a few things while you're in town. We just really want to say, we want to appreciate it. Say our appreciation to a couple of people here. Uh, Orrin and the people here at Main Stage for helping put this thing together. So, thank you guys. That's amazing. Uh, we really appreciate that. And, uh, of course, I'm gonna thank our San Diego County Fire Authority and our sheriffs. And if you have a problem with any of the sheriff or need medical attention, please contact one of us or one of them directly. They're right outside, usually on the corners. Speaking of the, uh, fire authority, they want to make sure that we keep the aisles open. So what we're gonna do today is we're going to have everybody... How many people here actually signed up for our card today to ask a question? The majority, okay. We have all in this big tub. Yeah. We have all this tub. And what we're gonna do is, uh, Mr. I don't know myself, we're gonna just pull randomly three. You'll be called to come up here and ask your question. And Jim and here, Dan Summers is gonna hold the mic for you. And we'll do three at a time and just keep going one after another. So you can be responsible for asking your own question. If you don't want to be screened, we're just gonna pull them right out of the bucket. Um, let's go ahead and get started here. I'd like to invite, uh, Bill Fink, the commander of the Sons of the American Legion, who came from Julian today. He's gonna be given the card.
You guys all see him from Julian? Welcome, everyone. My name is Bill Fink, as you heard, not from Julian. The braid I'm wearing signifies my membership of the Sons of the American Legion. We're an organization that serves our veterans and our community in honor of our veteran fathers who served this great nation fighting America's wars. These are turbulent times. And my prayer for all of you, be you Christian, Jew, Muslim, Buddhist, or any other religion or sect that worships... Remember that being an American is what binds us as a people and friends. Thomas Jefferson, an 18th century man whose words still stand in the harsh light of the prism of the 21st century, said that "I never considered a difference of opinion in politics, in religion, or in philosophy as a cause for withdrawing from oppression." Peace, strength, and wisdom be with you. Amen. One last thing. Jefferson also said that "in matters of style, swim with the current; in matters of principle, stand like a rock."
Lastly, before I get to the stage, I wanted to invite Doug Baldwin. He's an Army Combat Veteran. Uh, he was with, uh, he's here with a couple of folks from, uh, the Warrior Foundation and Liberty Station downtown. I want to thank them for their service. Thank you, my new assistant. Well, the other thing about Doug is, uh, actually, our star injured too. He's working with us around here, so. Thank you. I'm a star. And my dad says we're able to stand. Please remove your, uh, head covers. Face is black, place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is that better than you? Uh, nothing better. Hey, everybody. Well, one, thanks for being here. But this is, uh, you guys have watched the news on this. You've seen what's going on with all the different members of Congress. Ones that want to town halls, ones that are doing multiple town halls. So I'm just happy to be here. I have no problem ever, as you know, coming up and telling you what I believe in. Whether you like it or not, you'll always know where I stand. And that's the simple truth with me. I try to be very straightforward, very honest, very blunt. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer your questions very quickly with just a few words. And we can move on to get to as many things as you want to get to. Number one, I am ecstatic to have President Donald Trump as president. This is a night too. President Obama. This goes for an hour and a half. I mean, I might say cool things or bad things every three words. If we all clap, we're not gonna get that many questions. Right? So, but I am. This is somebody who believes in what I ran for Congress for eight years ago. Number one, the overarching theme of Americanness, that we're special, that we're exceptional, that we're free because of the men and women who fight for us, because of the God that we believe in. We are a free nation. And that's what makes, that's what makes Trump so special in these, you know... Trump believes in Americans. That's what makes him so special. So, number one, what Trump's gonna bring is a secure border. We're gonna finally have a secure border. We're lucky here in San Diego because we already have a double border fence. That, that either President Bush or President Clinton wanted to build, and that my dad built, but he was a congressman with earmarks. The whole fence here in San Diego with his earmark, we basically have zero illegal immigration through San Diego. Zero, because of the double border fence. Over the last eight years, over the last eight years, we haven't even had to jump the fence. Over the last eight years, you simply walk up to an ICE agent to come into America, and the ICE agent says, "Come on in." That was the Obama policy. You didn't even have to jump the fence. And number one, when I was talking, I talked with Trump about two and a half, three weeks ago. And I said, "President Trump, you gotta come to San Diego and see the fence that works." He turned to me, he turned to me and said, "No fence, it's gotta be a wall." He said, "They call it what they want, but we're gonna build something. So we're gonna secure the border. We've already started deporting illegal aliens that have committed any kind of crime whatsoever." That's what Trump has already started doing with his administration. Just yesterday, along these same lines, the Department of Justice is full of people that were sympathetic to the Obama administration and their policies of any kind of immigrants coming in, whether they're criminals or not, coming across the border. That says he's gotta win a war. That says he's gotta win every single US country that has been bombed by the Obama people. Amen. We're gonna have a secure border. We're gonna deport people that are not here legally. Number two, we're gonna grow the US economy by doing a very simple thing. Two simple things. Buy an American and hire an American. We've been talking about this many times. It's time that we as Americans realize that if you buy, if you buy US goods and you have US manufacturing, you're putting your neighbors, your brothers, and your sisters to work. If you take five dollars more than a Henry's made in the US, you're putting your family and friends to work. Trump believes in that. And we're gonna work hard to make sure that we buy American, we hire American. And Trump's already doing that. I'm going faster. I'm going to get to four points, so I'll take questions. Number three. You know, my original plan was to play "We Are the Champions" by Queen, whenever you guys start doing that. Number three, we're gonna revise the US tax codes. You can fill it out hopefully on a postcard and send it in. We have the highest corporate taxes in the world. We have highest tax. We're gonna be like, we're gonna make America competitive again till the companies come back to the US and start hiring American people. And just Trump being elected has already changed it. Just Trump being in office has made companies come back to the US and hire American workers. We're gonna reform the tax code. Um, two last things. We're gonna repeal Obamacare. Thank God. We're gonna repeal it. Yes, we're gonna repeal it. It's funny. We don't want the government telling us how our kids should be taught at school, the federal government. We don't want the federal government telling us where, why our kids should be taught at school, where they should go, what the school size should be. That's for us to decide. We're a free, individual, responsible people. You don't want the government telling us where our healthcare is coming from, what it has to entail, and what it has to cost. Because frankly, Obamacare is destroying itself. Everybody's healthcare costs have gone up, everybody's. Whether you like Obamacare or not, it's gone up. People have lost their doctors after Obamacare. It is failing. If we let Obamacare go, you will have no healthcare system hereafter. If you just destroy this country and save healthcare like they have asked the people to have the doctors to be there. Lastly. I actually kinda said my song. I kinda said your song. Lastly, the only reason that we're here and we're able to do this right now is because we have a strong US military, and we've had one for a few hundred years. That's the only reason we're in this room talking. Trump's gonna build the military back up. Nuclear is not going away. Iran's gonna have nuclear weapons. Russia's not going away, China's not going away. ISIS and Al Qaeda, they're not going away. We've had eight years of cutting the military. We've had eight years of getting more and more and more with less and less and less, and it's breaking the military. We're gonna make the military stronger again. We're gonna make the military great again. And we're gonna make sure that we can have a democracy like this that can be done. So I think I just made five points. That's all I made, five points. And the rest of us will be back and forth. Hopefully, a nice conversational style with due respect on each side. I'm respecting, and hopefully you do the same for me. So with that, let's go. When you spread your campaign funds?
Military has always been great. Military has always been great.
Erwin Jacob, come on up. Dale Timlin, come on up. Rosalind Morales, come on up, right here with me. Semper Five, thanks for your service too. He's got a Semper Five hat on.
Marine Corps Sergeant Raffael, Medal of Honor application. My question is, is there a way possible to make some kind of federal identification for veterans, especially those who look like us? Because I am documented, but I'm still afraid of being profiled. Is there a way that maybe the VA system already issues identification card? I know the state of California started, you know, printing veterans. We wish we made or did a 214 to the DMV or get our driver's license reissued. Is there a way to do something like that? Because again, I'm afraid of being a brown man in this country, being stopped. I've been stopped before when I'm, uh, starting, uh... In the back of my own calendar, because I'm profiled and became my border patrol for paying all this ridiculous amount of taxes to the Department of Homeland Security. And they cannot just check my documents real quick and let me be on my way? You know, why do I have to be stopped and being...
So to answer your, uh... Thank you. So, uh, first thing, Rafael Peralta. Rafael Peralta was from Mexico. Joined the, uh, US Marine Corps when he turned 18. Was nominated for the Medal of Honor, went all the way up to the ranks, and got stopped by the Pentagon bureaucracy. We put his nomination back in. Now that General Mattis, the Secretary of Defense, General Mattis was there on the ground when Peralta got hit, killed. We're almost positive that he's in the CIA. We're gonna work that out, number one. Number... He was a green card holder of immigrants, what he said, Peralta was. And I think that's a great way for people to come into this country, become Americans, learn patriotism, and then become citizens. Number two, number two, the answer is, the second question is, nobody should be profiled for any, for the way that they look at all. So, here's what you gotta do. The answer isn't, the answer isn't to accept the premise that because you look different, you expect to be profiled. Because that gives into them saying that they can profile you, but here's my new federal identification. The way to do this is to fix it so you don't get profiled at all. And profiling is illegal. They can't just pull you over for the way that you look. Period. So the answer is no. So here's the answer. The answer is no. I don't think people that look different and... By the way, I mean, I... People that look different than what? Americans look like Americans. So, the answer is no. I don't think that you should have it, I don't think that you have to have a special federal identification just because you're saying because you're brown, or you're black, or you're yellow, or you're any other color. You shouldn't have to have a... I'm answering. You should not have to have a special federal identification because of the way that you look. You're an American. You're between like Americans.
It's all been how domestic prescriptions draw us and have been brought over from, you know, been guilted against it. It's not like, you know, we're legalizing marijuana or new tax revenue to protect our economy after they're getting drug policies to South Latin America for 30 years and so many people die, causing a lot of damage. Why can't we just address the facts from what they are? The drug epidemic is a pandemic, it's homegrown, opioid addiction is...
And where's, I don't think it was a pretty good question. Where's Tommy Marquesa? Where is Tommy? Hey, come out. Hey, Tommy, Tommy works for me. Navy SEAL boat driver for a long time. Tommy's Mexican. You can't tell by looking at him. Right? But a great American. And if Tommy gets profiled by the cops, then they're in the wrong, and they ought to be gone after. Right? It's not about him getting a special identification. Thanks, Tommy. Thanks that Tommy came out for my problem. Is Rosalind Morales here or Dale Timlin? I have your questions. And so, once again, thanks for your service and your questions. Ann Egerton. Ann Egerton, here? So Tommy, by the way, said that there is a VA identification card that you can get, that you have, and I've got mine on my bag outside. Tommy's gonna give you this card. We're here to help. Terry Growth. Terry Growth? Nicholas Klein. By the way, we're gonna do more of these. We are. We have had a very busy two months. We've had a very busy two months making America great again. How about Michelle Shine? Michelle Shine?
My name is Russell Shu, actually.
Hi, Michelle.
Will you oppose bills to dismantle the DPA and removal of Environmental Protection Acts?
Uh, oppose bills to dismantle the EPA? No. In fact, we've already voted a bunch to try to dismantle the EPA. I'm gonna try to answer that. What you guys ask is that I answer the question. I just answered her in one sentence with a yes or no answer.
Yeah, we don't like that.
Okay, you might not like the answer, but it's gonna have to be a little bit longer. Here's what, here's what you can do with that. Destroy American business. There's a way to have clean air and clean water. There's a way to have clean air and clean water using commonsensical principles. You don't have to sue out of the back some American companies. In fact, the most recent, the most, the most recent environmental disaster that's happened here in San Diego has been from Mexico. Dumping millions of gallons of sewage into our ocean. They actually shut down a beach. They actually shut down a beach. Because that was a US company that could find $50,000 a day. But because it's Mexico, how much do you see to care about? All right, Linda Roach. Linda Roach. Joyce Finlay. Joyce Finlay, to build a fence out into the water. No Joyce Finlay. David Richardson. David Richardson. No? There's somebody.
Huge. Thank you. I spoke with your dad two minutes ago. I was on his immigration committee in '84. And, um, I would like to say, the pressure of following your dad and trying to bail out some of the problems that he faced, particularly overriding Iran-Contra relationships to the Central America program, et cetera. I ask you, I ask you, a better congressman, your father tried, but he was limited by ideology. Central America today is a mess based on a lot of that time. I have a signed constitution that your dad just signed for me two minutes ago. And I say, I was born to a mother who was an illegal alien. I also, Mr. Rick Carosa, whose great-grandfather and my great-great-grandfather are dead grandparents knew in Chihuahua, Mexico. They were immigrants, they were refugees coming away from the revolution. My family, 9,000 Mormons, were refugees coming into this country. And the question here is, please, Duncan, you can have more of us than you want, people. I believe it, I know it, I see it in your eyes. Please don't put the pressure on your son, Duncan Hunter, because coming along...
He ain't doing this. He's gonna get a real job.
I beg you to reconsider and work closely with the good people in this audience. We are here to help you. We want to have a good environment. Please, listen. The environment, Mexico, is our neighbor, is our friend.
Well, I'm gonna answer that, I'm gonna answer that. It wasn't, it wasn't, I'm gonna respond to this thing. Number one is, we should all be happy for one thing right now. What President Trump is doing, and I know people have a danger of an accident, I say President Trump, too, but here's what he's doing. This is for all of us. For the first time ever, we're gonna put Americans first, just for a little bit. Give it four years. Why can't we put Americans first for once? That's what Trump is doing. We've been worried about the rest of the world for eight years. While our countries, while our country's infrastructure has gone down, while our healthcare's gotten worse and more expensive, while education's gotten worse and more expensive, let's put ourselves first for a second. Number two, we have tried to help Mexico all for decades. And by the way, the border security issue is not just a Mexican issue. There's people coming in from China, from Pakistan, from Somalia, from Yemen, from Libya, from Afghanistan, from Iraq, from Syria, from Turkey, a lot of persons who don't understand anything. But coming across the southern border. We have given hundreds of millions of dollars to Mexico over the last few decades, trying to help them. We have military training down there for Mexico. We have law enforcement training. We give them law enforcement money. We send our police officers down there to train their police. We send our judges down there to train their judges. We send our military down there to train their military so that they can get a handle on the cartel networks that have destroyed Mexico. Guys, we are trying to help them, but they have to want to help themselves. Emily Claye? Selena Loes? Or Elizabeth Block? All come down. Would you hear? I'm gonna sit if you guys don't mind. You mind if I sit?
Given the recent issues involving your campaign on savings for personal expenses, we cannot trust you to reduce spending to live within our means, but first principle listed on your federal budget and spending page of your website. Given that you're not adhering in your personal life to the views that you espouse, why would any voter, conservative, liberal, or otherwise, not be better served by voting for someone who will comply with their stated goals in the future?
So, so this is what, what, what happened? Last, last year, when, last year... Last year, I found out that there were, there were the saving charges on my campaign. And I found out with the report that we've come out with every year. As soon as I saw those, I went through that, I paid back immediately $12,000, then did an internal audit on my own campaign finance. Did an internal audit. We then paid back another $50,000. And that includes everything. We paid back about 130% of what my own internal audit came out with. I did that prior to the election. I announced it prior to the election. Uh, we have, we've been open about this whole thing. These are mistakes that were made by my campaign that I paid back immediately. Put it this way, I'm gonna be the only congressman that over the last two years has not taken any mileage reimbursement. So here's an example of it. No, no, literally, the only congressman in Congress with no mileage reimbursement for miles with anybody that drives for business gets, right? Because here's the reason why. I would charge my mileage on my car instead of charging it on my personal credit card. I would do it on my campaign card when I was going to campaign events, right? Instead of doing it on my personal card and getting a receipt and sending that in, I would just do it on my campaign card, right? No, it's not $100,000. Anyway, no, I, I'll tell you one too. We have a shoestring operation. I'm not like most congressmen. I own big campaign offices with lots of people in. That's not how we operate. What I am is a representative to you. And the campaign finance stuff, I was not watching it closely. I have fixed it now. I have fixed it now, it's all straightened out. I paid it back, I announced it prior to the election. And I'm not gonna make excuses for it, because when I'm making an explanation, when I start explaining it, it sounds like excuses. The bug stops here. It was my responsibility. It was my responsibility. It was my responsibility. It was my responsibility for the campaign. It was my responsibility for my family. For the charges that my kid paid, that's on me. And I take responsibility for it. I fixed it. And as far as I'm concerned, end of story. Okay, so, so here's what's happening with the healthcare bill. And if you've really paid attention to the news, you'll kind of get this, but it's really in the weeds unfortunately. Anything that... I'm in the House of Representatives, right? Anything that we pass to the Senate has to get 60 votes. 6-0 votes. We have 52 Republican senators right now. Is that right? 52, 53? Yeah, something like that. 53. The point is, there's no way we can pass a bill to repeal or to replace totally through a process called reconciliation. Reconciliation is what we have to use with the Senate, because you only need 51 votes to do reconciliation. You have to do things that have a direct budget consequence. So you look at something, line A, line A costs this much money, you can affect that through reconciliation. What you can't affect through reconciliation are things like this. Obamacare says you have to have 10 different things that insurance has to cover. That's one reason our insurance all went up, right? You have to have 10 things. Those, none of those 10 things, none of those 10 things, we can find a per-line item budget cost to it, so we can't repeal those through reconciliation. So the answer is, there is no full repeal possible through reconciliation. So the answer, my first answer is, I would like a full 100% repeal. 100%. 100% repeal, but then go ahead. Why can't kids stay on their parents' insurance till they're 26, that's right? Why can't people with pre-existing conditions get healthcare without paying astronomical costs? Those things are totally fine. Things like giving Medicare to states. I think we ought to block grant Medicare to states.
...
... legal immigrant, and is now a doctor, and wants to talk for two minutes about both of those things. Is that bad? Hey, if you're not gonna respect each other, you're not gonna have mutual respect back and forth.
Respect is by answering our questions.
But out of mind, the gist of the problem is a solution, and I'm hoping that you will expand your wisdom and be part of some... You cannot manage, you cannot manage healthcare, you know, with a business.
Yes.
Right? I'm a doctor. I should be more accessible to you. Patients should have more access to me than a doctor, right? Now, do you think I belong to that health insurance business?
No.
No.
We don't know you. We don't know you.
And I lose out until you're in the family. All I'm saying is, the solution, the solution, let's say it. Just consider this. Just consider this. In the current health insurance company out of healthcare, where there's a membership, right, between... Right? Question any health insurance where it prohibits that patient-doctor-physician relationship. Consider that. Dr. Beltmeyer, you know, I'm here to help you. I represent you. And honestly, I'm an American citizen just like you. Not at all.
We wanna talk to Duncan.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, James. That took some courage. All right, Selena Loeb, is she here? All right, how about Jeremy Rickman? Or Lark Perkhardt? Or Lanson Moles? Those three people, come on down. Lanson Moles? Okay, we have a lot of questions. People are in here, so let's just keep going. I mean, those people here are gonna hold.
Congressman, you can probably answer it in one word happily. Will you commit to another town hall meeting at a larger, more appropriate venue?
The question is, would you like to make to a larger town hall at a more appropriate venue? I think this is a pretty rad venue, but... So the answer is, yes, yes, but not in April necessarily. We'll plan it out, but absolutely. We'll do a larger town hall. Yeah, we'll host it. Everybody will know. It'll be great again. I have no idea, but we'll do it.
You have to wait until October or Christmas?
No, probably not.
In this spring. I'm asking for a commitment.
So no, I'm not gonna give a commitment on my time. I couldn't tell you what I'm doing tomorrow. We'll be doing this again. I hope to see you. I'll have you there.
Congressman, I'm Lanson Moles. How will you assure access to healthcare for citizens too poor to benefit from tax credits and after Medicaid expansion expires in two years?
What would make the federal government manage? Once you get rid of this, healthcare gets way less expensive. Way less expensive. And that's what it's gonna be like. The lower earning wage folks, that's what, the state is there to do that. We're gonna give them block grants, because once again, you don't want the federal government saying, here's the healthcare you have to have. Here's what we're gonna give you. Your state is much more responsive than the federal government. Your state is much more responsive than the city. And your city is much more responsive than the county. Because you have to write down the actions of these. The key is to bring it down to the lowest level possible, like education, where you can make changes at the low levels. I'd wait for a giant $3,000 bill in D.C. So that's a, that's a people. And once again, you know, I'm not gonna bypass this. We're not guaranteeing healthcare for everyone. We're guaranteeing access. Jeremy Brockman? By the way, just so you all know, in Medicaid, California ranks, I forget the number, but it's around 48 or 49 out of 50 states in the amount that they match for Medicaid. That's a state issue. That's a state issue. Gloria Janwick or Richard Niles?
Yay, Richard!
Go, Richard.
Richard.
No voucher. You're betting me both. Big betting.
The question I wanted to ask is, what veterans' healthcare is available for our veterans who do not qualify for VA benefits? And you know the ones I'm talking about. We were talking about the ones who they were separated from the militaries, but they did offer this service. And then I have to say another thing, that I am one of your constituents. I am a registered nurse, work at the VA. I'm also elected director for the Rosemont Healthcare District, which is a large hospital. Over 750 square miles. We see a lot of patients go through there, the district. I went to the inauguration to support the president that was elected, duly elected. I participated in the women's march. And when I came back, I read that article. And I have to tell you, as my representative, I am just startled by the corrupt nature of it, this dishonorable conduct. And you do not, do not deserve to represent us. And I am very tired of the corruption. I'm gonna run against you, because...
Number one, anybody that has a service-connected disability will, number one, get healthcare. And number two is guaranteed to get healthcare from the VA if they have a service connected disability. When they jump school or in the middle of Iraq, Afghanistan, hurt their knees jumping. That didn't stop them from serving, so they did 20 years or 30 years, or even 10 years, whatever. They can go back to the VA and say, hey, I hurt my knees at jump school. I have arthritis now. I need to have knee surgery. The VA will fix that. That's a service-connected disability for people that didn't get separated because of their injury. So anybody that has a service-connected disability can get care from the VA. So the question is then, if you don't have a... So the question is then, if you don't have a service connected disability, what does the VA do for you? So, me and the, when the American Legion comes out to DC, which they just did about two weeks ago, and the VFW came out to DC, which they did a few weeks ago, we get into a little scuffle over this. If you had the honor of serving your nation, and you went to war or did not go to war, but you didn't get any service connected disability, but 30 years later, you're 60, 70 years old, or you're 40 years old by age, and your back hurts or something is wrong with you, I don't think that that's on the American taxpayer to provide for your healthcare at that point, because it's not a service connected disability. It's you, you served, and then 20 or 30 years later, and especially as people get older, they have more experience. I think I have to work with that, even though service connected is part of life. I can't manage a medical institution to fight for everything that they can't, whether it's as good. I've just made it my first point in the VA. But Trump in the VA, basically, has something with it. Here's how you fix the VA. Get rid of it as it exists today. Get rid of it, and here's what you do. You make the VA focus on young men and women, or older ones, with PTSD, with traumatic brain injury, with missing limbs, with bullet wounds, with parts of their faces blown off, parts of their body blown off. That's what the VA should specialize in. For anybody else, here's a card, go wherever you want to. Go to Grossman, go to Shumpert, Scribbs, go to Cedar Sinai. It's on us, it's on the taxpayer, go to wherever you need. But by the way, that will save, that will save billions of dollars, letting veterans choose to go wherever they want to. If they choose to go to the VA still, to go to Balboa, that's fine too. A lot of folks that are in the system, once they're in, like, especially because it's close, and we're here in San Diego. But if you're not in San Diego, folks, if you live in Minnesota or Wyoming, you may not be next to a good VA hospital. In that case, here's a card, go wherever you want to. And let the VA focus on the men and women that have combat wounds, because they're the ones that have been let down over the last eight years.
I'd like to first thank you for doing this event today, and thank you for your service. If I have one of the ten triggers that you mentioned in the ACA, pregnancy is one of those triggers, and before the AC, that was not covered. My brother had to make the hard choice of having an abortion or paying $40,000 for a baby. Thankfully, he paid $40,000, and he was well off to do that. I'm afraid that not having that control is balanced. Can't leave that, I can't make it against that. That's not my question today, my question's about your ethics violations that you admitted to. So my concern is that you reference that you paid for the gas on your credit card. You failed to mention that your wife earns a six-figure salary in your organization.
Negative. She doesn't, she was my campaign manager, by the way, that's how I met her, she was managing a campaign. She's not being paid now, no. No, she's not being paid now. She was, and she was getting, and she was getting $3,000 a month. That's not secure, please, go ahead.
I'd have to fact check, I don't actually correct me. My question is, why do you feel that it was acceptable for you to vote to close that thing down? To investigate these things?
It's simple, people for the Republicans, the one, and, you know, Democrats, who's the thing? This group called the OCE, is Office of Congressional Ethics. It's pretty much, number one, it was created by Nancy Pelosi, that should tell you all you need to know. Number two, it is a fairly liberal group that puts things way... The OCE stuff on me is that they were feeding the Union Tribute, which is owned by the LA Times. I don't think the way to... We have a congressional ethics committee, made up of Democrats and Republicans. And Congress, the ethical committee, called the Ethics Committee, made up of Democrats and Republicans, staff... You have the Nancy Pelosi, who gives air, raises on one side, without having looked at the guy, the guys that are actually elected to do this in Congress. That's why. It was not, it was the head, the chairman of the Judiciary Committee, Bob Goodlatte, brought this up. And he chairs the Judiciary Committee, he's the one that brought this up. And Paul Ryan said, "Yeah, there's a problem, let's work this out, give us four months to kind of fix this." So you don't have the Nancy Pelosi group throwing people on the bus. Do you have a little scuffle for you to weigh in on that, on that topic, then? There was no vote. There was no vote on this, my point is, Paul Ri... No, I didn't put the motion board, Bob did that. But anyway, there was no vote on it, but Paul Ryan said, "Yeah, there's a problem." The Republican leadership said, "Yeah, there's a problem." All the Republicans said, "Yeah, there's a problem, we're gonna fix it." And we are gonna fix it. Exactly, we're gonna hold, we're gonna hold Paul Ryan accountable to actually fix this. Because this is one of the ways that the media and the local press goes out and tells the Republicans. You guys are right, yeah, the media's perfect. Lynette Williams? Lynette Williams? Bethany? Bethany Amborn? And Jim Fontana?
Yeah, it's the truth!
Joy is a year and a half. I'm one of your constituents, I live in El Cajon. Okay, closer. As we find out more about the new healthcare, the details are coming out, that it is less affordable and way less accessible. There's a lot of people that are gonna lose their healthcare. So I just wanna know how you're going to support your constituents, who are dramatically affected by this. Then, they're often the most vulnerable. So specifically, I'd like you to speak today, age-based, of the way the ACA is structured now, and how you plan to address that when your constituents read that.
You want to be responsible? You have businesses, you have businesses from Farpoint to Macula to El Cajon, Chantilly, Lakeside, here in Ramona, that have had to let people go, or put them as part-time because of Obamacare. Obamacare has put people out of work, so that they couldn't pay for insurance in the first place if they wanted to. Here's, here's the key. Broil the economy, put more money into your pockets, and make competition, make health insurance like everything else in this country, where the accessibility goes up, the quality goes up, and you're able to pay for it because you have a job, because Donald Trump fixed this economy. That's it for me. My last question, my last question was on the age-based tax credits, I'm still looking at it. Okay, I mean, once again, I support a full repeal, going back to the way where healthcare was free enough to us and our doctors, and then fixing that, and treating it. By the way, it's kinda funny, I got elected in 2008 with Obama. This is nothing that I have not said in this room, every year, over and over.
So watch out!
I would say the exact same thing.
We're paying attention.
There's nothing to do here. You guys act like I became a conservative Republican yesterday.
You really answered my question already, Duncan, it was about healthcare. My son moved to Arizona because he could afford to live there. They cannot afford Obamacare because their premiums doubled, and their deductible was sky-high. They do not have insurance under Obamacare. That's why I'm hoping you do full repeal, full repeal. However, Obamacare is socialized medicine, like in Canada, and they can't come to America. Can Obamacare in America, because socialization doesn't work there? What do you think else?
Sounds good, babe. Health insurance in Arizona didn't just double, it went up 145%. And I'm sure you've all heard this too, one-third of all counties in the country have only one insurance provider. California insurance companies have a monopoly, put together by the liberal government in this state, where they get to choose what they charge you for insurance. And if you don't think that the hospitals and the insurance companies are in collusion, to get as much money as possible, and you're wrong. It's demonopolize and put competition back into healthcare, and let you have whatever plan you want to have. Whatever plan, not the three chairs and gold silver pallets that Obama said you're allowed to have. Is that simple? You're on the, I'm sure this is... Well, this question is associated with that, it's probably one of the few apolitical questions you're gonna get today. I've had 30 years in the military, my son just completed college. Syria, absolute mess. Beside Assad's forces, you know, the rebels, Hezbollah, Kurds, Iran, Turkey, ISIS, Russia, and the US. They're all fighting there, each with its own agenda. Can you sort this out for us? And aside from defeating ISIS, where are the US's goals in Syria? That's your question. It's kind of been Russian, before Trump, before Trump... Talking up, you must speak, at least one, that's one. Before Trump won, he was talking about how he wanted to work with Russia against radical Islamists, right? No, but he talked about that too. There was no surprise, it was no surprise after he gets in, that he wants to work with Russians against radical Islamists. So here's what you do. When it comes to Iraq and Syria, Trump needs to work with Russia and absolutely destroy them and crush them. That's it, so that's, I mean, that's the one answer. There's only, there's only one way to do this, you have to crush ISIS. You now have marine artillery in Syria, so you guys saw that in the news. Do you wanna know why you have marine artillery there and not army artillery or something else? They are fast in, fast out, we're not gonna build forward operating bases, we're not gonna stay there and nation build. We're gonna crush you, we're gonna chew you up, and if you're a radical Islamist, we're gonna spit you out and we're gonna leave and say, "Don't do it again," or "We're gonna do it again." That's why you have marine artillery there right now. The key is, the key to this entire part of the world, this goes along with Trump's new travel ban, which is now being protested by about six states, he changed it. This one's going to go through, I think the first one he did, kinda did, off the seat of his pants. This one's better. This one's better. It's still gonna do the same thing, and it's gonna ban people from six countries. The Iraqis are gonna be able to come in, because they have an actual government that can vet the Iraqi people. We don't, we're not saying, "Don't come here," we're saying, "If you're a failed state, fuck it." If you have no background information from your state, if you have no medical records, if you have no criminal records, if you can't tell us if somebody's gonna ban, we're not gonna take them. And we're gonna take 90 days, and maybe 60 days now, and figure out how we stop terrorists from playing into our country. So here's what you do in the Middle East. Here's what I think you do, here's what I think you do in the Middle East, and I actually have a thing called the Hunter Doctrine, if you wanna look at this. I think Trump copied it. It's called, "You kick ass and you leave." Really? Because I went to war, and by the way, when I got up here, I didn't introduce myself. I did three tours, Iraq in '03, Iraq in '04, Afghanistan in '07. No, no, I'm not, I just didn't do the introduction thing of myself when I got up here. I have been there, I have now seen how you can't help people that don't want to help themselves. How you can't, you can't help people that don't share the same, and I'm gonna say, Christian values, Judeo-Christian values, and would have an effect. I mean by that, it's not disagreeing. At its very base, the values that we share as Americans is the value of life. Life matters. Right? Life matters. No matter where you're from, no matter what color you are, life matters. Radical Islamists do not believe that life matters. They will kill themselves, they will, they will kill their women, they will blow themselves up, they will have their kids go in with bombs strapped on them and blow themselves up. They do not respect or value life. You cannot help people and say, "Hey, be like America," when they don't even understand the very, the very basic premise of valuing human life. So here's what we do. If you wanna be a terrorist country, if you wanna try to send foreign fighters here, or to our allies, we're gonna find you, and we're gonna kill you. And we're gonna put you in Guantanamo. If you wanna be friends with us, if you wanna be friends with the United States, man, we will bend over backwards to figure out how to put jobs over there, how to work with you, to have people come over here, we will work with you. If you share the values that we share. But why let, number one, we're not gonna let people into our country anymore that don't share the basic premise of life matters. Number one. Number two, I have seen firsthand, the only way, the only way to stop radical Islamists is not to build them mosques, it's not to build them schools, it's not to build them dams, that they don't appreciate anyway. You have to get rid of the bad guys. That's the way to do it, and that's what Trump's gonna do. Vivian Delcunore? Mary Ames? Or Hank Kraus? By the way, while we're waiting for that, I put forward a letter and a bill that says, if you're a, if you're an Iraqi or an Afghan that helped us, that helped our military, let me tell you what Obama's done for eight years. With the US military, let me tell you what he's done. If you served with the US military, you wanna... Back and forth here, right? Okay, so here's what's happened for eight years. The men and women that have helped us as translators, and that show our guys on the ground, how the culture works, and where to go, and where the bad guys are, Obama put them in the back of the line for immigration. No, that's true. I'm telling you, that's how it's worked. Syrian refugees who are not vetted have come over before Iraqis that served in the US Army last week for years. I'm just telling you how it is, you can do, you're doing Obama right now. You wanna be Obama. So here's the last important, put in the men and women that served with us, that were on the front lines with us, helping us, putting them in the front of the line, saying, "You've already proven yourselves." Their families are under threat by radical Islamists every day, they're under threat by radical Islamists. Put those men and women up front, because they've earned it. Jennifer Schultz? Or Jan Johnson? Fuck, Gary Jones? Gary Jones? Daryl Beck?
Thank you for coming up today. The question that I have is, because the president's been giving so much trouble on the, uh... The incoming refugees and so forth, I'd like to have you comment on the possibility of making a permanent immigration ban and vetting on all four nations. Just as many as our ancestors, many of our ancestors, were required to do so on Ellis Island. Island. As you know, the people that came into Ellis Island had to be vetted, sent to hospitals if they were sick, sent off to their countries of service, you know? So I'd like to see if there's a possibility, maybe just making a blanket.
Thank you for your question. Here's, here's what I, for a fact, let me, let me tell you. The way that France, the way that France and Germany and a lot of other European countries that we have decent waiver programs with, meaning they automatically get to come here to the US. It was fair trade back and forth. We can travel over there without super vetting somebody, without them vetting us, and they can travel here without us, us vetting them. Except when they open their doors to millions of radical Islamists vetting whatsoever. The reason this question, the, the reason this question is valid is because now, even if you're in Germany, I hear you, thank you. Even if you're from Germany now, we, we can't guarantee, we can't guarantee that the German government vetted you. We, we can't tell if you're now a radical Islamist in France that drove that van and, and killed dozens of people, eighty-something people. We, we can't tell anymore. So why not put a vetting system in that's fairly easy for these other countries? Because from Europe and other nations that actually have, have governments, unlike the Six Nations that we have the travel ban on, if you have a government, you can vet the people that want to come here. Why, why not do that? Why not make America safe as safe as we possibly care? What's wrong with waiting today? The idea is, President Trump said it passed in the President Congress. He said something to the effect of, "The world, I represent America." That's King's legacy.
Jeremy Brown, Sue Briggs, Shore.
Let's get back to Statue of Liberty.
Jim Sir, Lynn Jin Sir. Lynn?
France calls, they want their statue back.
Janice Chapman.
What about HR 610? School voucher.
Don Ramey. Donald Ramey.
You're outside. You're right. Kid keeper. HR 610. What's your staff?
Michelle McCaffrey. Michelle McCaffrey. Dante Cosentino. Dante Cosentino.
First of all, okay, I've been a resident here for 41 years. Obviously, you're one of your constituents. But anyway, I want to ask you about healthcare. Now, you mentioned that we have access under this bill, access to healthcare. The question is, what about guaranteed health? We have access. I, I may have access to, let's see, first class seat on the airplane. But if I can't afford it, it's a different, right?
The reason that we're, once again, the reason they have tax credits, the reason that we're doing repeal and replacing what we're doing, we know it's going to disrupt the market. I, I don't believe in guaranteed healthcare. I believe in guaranteed access to healthcare that anybody can afford. And if, and if you're not able to, if you're not able to afford it, and you're very sick, right? The lifetime caps back on, we're keeping that on. But if you're not able to afford it, we're going to be giving hundreds of millions of dollars to the states. This is what we call that entitlement or subsidy. But we're going to do it, and we're going to do it mainly for the, the first couple of years after we repeal Obamacare to lessen the impact on people that will not be able to have access, right? And in the end, remember, so what you had, you had a free healthcare system where we could all afford, where we could all afford for the most part our insurance, and thus it couldn't afford, we're taking care of. That went to a totally government-grand system. Once you take this away, once you take all of this away, compete competition, if you, if you demonopolize the insurance companies in the state and you decouple them from the hospital so that they can't collude on your pricing, and you're able to go to chains and say, "Hey, doctor, here's my problem," and he goes with you directly. It's a patient, patient-doctor relationship. If you take government out of it, it will be less expensive, it will be affordable, and you'll have competition. So guaranteed access is different than guaranteed healthcare, but we're not guaranteeing anything by nature. I mean, I, I don't believe in
Mercy, Mercy for the Love of Life, President Biden. Shorty language. It looked like that cost less than ours.
The healthcare in France, I just think it's a lot of healthcare. It is, it is not good. If you guys want to wait two years to get a, a desecration or something, I think it's government law. My, my job over all two years, and there's very few exceptions except for national security and, and border security, is to get the federal government out of our lives. That's, that's the government law. Okay, Ross, we're going to, we're going to talk about the Second Amendment. I can guarantee you, those of you that care about the Second Amendment here, you're right to be completely and totally protected for four years, and they have been for the last six years. Republicans and Congress have not done anything to prohibit or take away or lessen the Second Amendment, even though the administration tried to do it.
About Rosalynn Morales, Jenny Rodriguez, or April Ortiz?
Free healthcare is not free. Somebody pays for everything.
This is April. By, by the way, people are asking, I'll answer. We got put on, I got put on Obamacare immediately in December of the year that passed, out of DC, as did my San Diego office. So we're actually not even undercover in California. We're in one of the smallest, worst Obamacare networks in the country. My premiums were thousands of dollars. It's like, my, my deductible's $5,000. My premiums were $1,000, $1,000 a month. Mine, mine doubled. My, my healthcare doubled. We had Blue Cross, New Shield. I have three kids, 10, 13, and 16. My healthcare was expensive, but it doubled. And by the way, I've, I've been in Obamacare since '07. It's actually too bad that my staff, I don't care if, if I get punished for being a representative of my staff, actually should not have to go to a DC network. And let's hear it in Ramona. That's pretty stupid.
Okay, my name is April Ortiz. I'm a constituent of El Capone. My name is April Ortiz. I'm one of your constituents. I'm a resident of El Capone. Thank you. I like you and every other patriotic, patriotic American here. I was outraged to among official fights of our own intelligence community interfering with our election in favor of one candidate over another. And that candidate is now president. Will you vote for an independent investigation to root out all aspects of their unfairty or ineptness?
So here's what we got. The Russians hacked the Democrat National Committee's server. And I mean, a bunch of people, clearly, but in her campaign. Okay? They didn't hack the voting booths. They didn't come in with, not anybody's candidacy of the vote this way. There, there are four congressional investigations going on right now into the Russians. Okay? If one comes to the Armed Services Committee, because we might take our own hack at it on the military side of things, and I'm asked to be involved in that, absolutely. We, we ought to investigate because the Russians haven't, this is not an issue. I don't think that they affected the election, but who's it they do? I'm sorry if I'm wanting to, Trump. The Russians hack US, hack US military. They hack all the guys that make our stuff, Boeing, Brumman, Nasco, that, all the companies that do the best stuff, the Russians do have. So yes, absolutely. Let's look into that. What I'm not going to go and vote for is a witch hunt by the Department of Justice or the FBI or the intelligence communities that have been infiltrated with seditious Obama folks that want to go after this president. You guys support this? You guys support the Trump deep state? You guys support the Trump deep state? You have, you have tens of thousands of Obama, I said thousands of Obama appointees, thousands of Obama appointees and people that worked under that administration who hate Donald Trump as much as you do. They're trying to take him down from the inside. I, I think that Donald Trump did have his own conversations and email intercepting. And those of you that believe in democracy and free election, to tell me that a sitting president whose, whose party is running for the presidency can wiretap and intercept another candidate's tone? I don't think that you would be completely, not for an irrelevant government that controls us, which is what we have right now.
All right, listen up, listen up. Victoria Wright, Sinclair, or David Finley?
Obama did not wiretap a phone. Hey, so here's the pretty funny. Trump used the term, really quick, Trump used the term wiretap. When Trump tweeted out "wiretap," guess, guess what? We haven't wiredtapped since we've had cell phones. So the, the intelligence community and the FBI and the DOJ could actually say, "Tap Trump's phone." Here's what they call, oh, I mean, sharing. Here's what they call it now. They call it intercepted. If Trump would have tweeted out, "I have my phone calls and my information's been intercepted," they would not be able to deny. Remember, these are all lawyers. Are you telling me you guys love lawyers too?
All right, listen up. Daniel Boucher?
Dan, actually, we're just doing one more question. It's almost been an hour and a half. Okay, time flies. Daniel Boucher, is she here?
Last question, folks.
The President, United States cannot say something like that with not backing it up.
So, um, will you support the rights and safety of refugees? Um, do you support, will you condemn the executive order ever?
So the answer to the first question is, if the President invented, already let you in as a refugee, we need to do everything we can to vet the people that are already here. Wait, let me change that. Extreme vet the people that are already here. Okay? And, and if they're bound to be fined, we've already made a promise that as refugees, you're already here, we're not going to send those guys back. I mean, they came over here under President Obama. If we can prove that they, that they share American values, they sure stay. Number two, when I go against the executive order, no, I wholeheartedly support Trump's executive order. A hundred percent. And I bet Congress should follow up and put it into law. Countries have an executive order that would be overwritten under this president. Put it into law. It cannot be changed without a 60% authority. Once again, why don't you want to be safer?
Okay, so, um, will you condemn the bomb threat against Jewish-American community centers?
I condemn a few things. I condemn the bomb threats against any organization or church or religious or anybody here in the US. I condemn the death threats against me too. I condemn a death threat against everybody.
condemn the, by Breitbart News and also Steve Bannon? No?
I don't think, I don't think Steve Bannon, uh, he's not a bad guy.
Or encouraging genocidal ideas on the graphic in the news.
I don't think the expression "genocidal" I did too. Thank you. Last little, we're going to close now. Next time we'll do it much, much bigger. Thousands and thousands of people. I don't know if you can tell this. I, I enjoy this. I know you're yelling at me, but I'm telling you what I've done. And let me disclose, we don't want, let me disclose. What, what makes this great is that we're